We're good. All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, February 25th. We'll start every meeting like we do with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance for the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, we'll grant Westwood Media Center the right to videotape and ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting? Okay, seeing none. First, we have on the chairman's update, and probably the reason most of you are here this evening. We have the 25 Years of Service Awards, and we have two recipients this evening. We have Kathy Rose, who's an employee at the library, and Randy Castrini? Castrini, thank you. Start with Kathy first. Kathy Rose started her career at the Westwood Public Library back in 1994. Initially, she worked as a substitute library assistant, working in the main library and curriculum and circulation and the children's department. In May of 2000, she became an assistant branch library assistant. November 2004, she transitioned back to the main library, where she's been working both in tech services and reference desk services ever since. Kathy's Branch Storytimes, as a mom, where Kathy's always remembered every child's name, very impressive, and the names of all the branch patrons. The words from her colleagues describe her as funny, friendly, kind, and always willing to help. Always ready, with an easy smile and a quick hello to all. She's known for "Ta Ta" as she leaves the room. So we'll see if she does that tonight when she leaves. For example, Kathy and Teri Dwayne have worked and traveled together for 15 years, and she's often known for sharing her iPad funny stories and photos, and is everyone who might be joining us that day in the lunchroom. She's lighthearted, good-natured, and these lunches are often filled with much laughter and fun. So Kathy, would you come on up? We have an award for you, and as always, we usually take a picture with you. Let's take these off.
Stuck to microphones.
Yes. Okay. Our second person this evening, Randy. Randy has worked as a mechanic for the Department of the DPW for 25 years. During that time, Randy has been instrumental part in keeping the town's fleet in the best shape, and he continues to better himself in the department by taking advantage of new trainings, seminars, and classes. He's an active member of the Association of Fleet Maintenance Supervisors. Randy takes pride in the work that he performs and is a valuable asset to the department. I wrote down here, Randy, they left me a long thing about you. I wrote down the MacGyver of the DPW department. He seems to be able to adapt on the fly and fix the equipment as necessary, and as it gets older, Randy's still able to figure it out. Randy lives in North Attleboro, his wife Donna, and two dogs. Has two stepchildren, Ryan and Megan, and also serves as a proud grandfather to Jackson and Avery. So Randy, come on up. Nice round of applause for you. Randy, get the job right away. Yes. Does any of the department heads want to speak either about Kathy or Randy? I give you an opportunity now. All of Westwood is watching live, come on now.
Just be near this one of the microphones.
Sure.
I'll just quickly echo those comments, Mr. Walsh, but beyond that, Randy would give you the shirt off his back. He really would. Without him, I don't think our fleet would be where it's at today. He's an instrumental part in the new equipment that we buy. His opinion is valued by both Todd and I, and we really value him as part of our team. So Randy, congratulations, and we appreciate everything you've done.
Come on up. We knew once somebody stood up, you'd have to stand up.
So I have to say that one of the stories about Kathy that I thought was so cute is when she was a branch library assistant at the branch, she used to love Patricia Palacco's stories. And now that she's in tech services, evidently when there's a new Patricia Palacco book, Kathy reads it cover to cover before it ever goes out on the shelf because it's still one of her favorite authors. And I think that we truly do love working with you, Kathy. You're just a great... Her sense of humor is wonderful, and every day she comes to work with a smile and makes everybody else happy. So thank you for 25 years.
All right, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd really like to, but I know.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
We're going for drinks if you want to go in.
Good idea.
Ta ta. Ta ta now.
The only thing I was gonna say to them was the trucks are always so clean.
Yeah.
It amazes me.
Okay, moving along our agenda, we do have some announcements to make. First, it is time for the Roy London Humanitarian Awards nominations. If you know a special resident or organization that deserves to be nominated for the Roy London Humanitarian Award, the applications are now available at the selectmen's office. You can find them online as well. They will be open until sometime in March, I believe.
March 8.
March 8, thank you, Nancy. March 8, so you need to get the names of any group or individual who you think has unselfishly contributed to their time and talents to both within and outside of Westwood. So as I said, the nomination papers are available, or you can contact Christine in the selectmen's office. Now it's time to mark your calendars, ladies and gentlemen, because the date for Westwood Day has been preserved. It is September 21st, the annual home football game on the Friday night before versus North Quincy High School. And as you know, it'll start off with a road race on Saturday morning and then run from 10 to 3 o'clock, more likely than not, at the high school complex. So please mark your calendars right now. September 21st will be the day for Westwood Day. All right, scheduled action this evening. First, we have an appointment of interim and special counsel. Dan, you wanna come up? We've been asked to consider the appointment of both Mr. McCusker and your law firm, specifically you and Garrett, to serve as interim town counsel until we are able to replace one or both at that point in time. Is that your phone, Dan?
Fortunately, it is, and I thought I had turned it off. And I had, it's just not working.
Okay.
And that has been a problem lately.
So Tom is retired, but he's been asked to stay on board until we have a new town counsel or June 30th, 2019, whichever comes first. And we also have both you and Garrett as outside counsel, if you will, but acting like inside counsel. I see that discounted rate over your usual rates to the town. Thank you very much.
I wish I could discount it more.
Well, perhaps we can find a way for you.
You'll have to take it up with my managing partner.
You did have, Dan, and so put on the record that you did have three potential conflicts that you'd made us aware of: Fox Hill Village, Global Petroleum, and the Westwood Lodge. I read through the entire contract, don't ask me why, but I did. I did only have one question for you, and it may be a question, but as a lawyer, I know you charge by quarter hours or by tenths?
Tents.
Tents, okay. That's the only question I had.
No, we don't charge by quarters.
Yes, some do, that's why I ask.
Yeah.
Mike, where do we stand in the search for town council?
So we went out the first time. We interviewed three of the applicants. At that time, we decided that we'd learned some things about what they were proposing. We felt that it was in the interest of the town to allow them to modify their proposals back to us and some information we'll give back to them, and take advantage of the fact that we have heard there were a couple of individuals or firms that were interested in applying that kind of missed the first time around. So we opened it back up. We're actually actively pursuing other applicants to join the three that are already under consideration.
And so people have access to the new application?
Yep, and the RFPs, and we've made them available. We went out with a 30B approach the last time. We've modified that because it's a hybrid between an employee application, because there's the possibility of having an individual like Tom serve, and firms, and so we went out with a 30B type of hybrid. We felt that that was too constraining. We've gone back to the state. We've asked them for advice on how best to go about what we're trying to do because, as you know, or as we know, employees that are currently employed as individuals might not want to be part of an open process that they have to divulge their name because that could put them at jeopardy of their job. Nobody wants to do that until they're at least in the position of being a finalist. And so we've asked how we could go about that so we could protect people's names that wanted to apply as individuals, and we've gotten advice from the state as to how to go about that.
And the deadline for submissions?
I'm not really sure. I think it's a couple of weeks, but...
Can you let us know?
It's out now.
It's out now, okay. And where can anyone find it, Mike? Is it on the website?
Yeah. I think it's where we normally advertise our employment positions in our RFPs online. I don't look there very often, so I'm not very familiar.
Okay, I'll get it from Christine. I have a couple of law firms that might be interested, too.
It's on the town's website, under procurement.
Okay.
Should it be down as under job opportunities?
Yeah, we should probably put it there, too.
Sorry, we digress, I just wanted to...
And I thought they did that.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
All right, any other questions?
I think it's great that we have Dan and Garrett and their firm willing to support us through the upcoming town meeting process. I think, given that we're at late February, it'd be hard to have somebody on board to do that, so we appreciate that, Dan, and know that you know the town very well, and your guidance will be welcome, and glad that Tom is able to help us behind the scenes on other town council matters, so that's great.
So the arrangement is mostly Dan does the nighttime activity, and daytime activity is done by Tom.
Back to a shift worker.
Yeah.
All right, we're good? We're good.
Okay, I move that the board appoint Tom McCusker to serve as interim town counsel for the town of Westwood until the appointment of a new town counsel or June 30th, 2019, whichever comes first, and to authorize the town administrator to sign an engagement letter with Daniel Bailey and Gareth Orsman of Pierce Atwood Law Firm for the purpose of interim special town counsel until the appointment of a new town counsel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so now, Tracy, did you want to come up? Anthony's Cold Fired Pizza, we have a change in officers.
How are ya?
Tracy, we have in front of us a change. This is a corporate change, it's not gonna affect what happens down at University Station.
Correct.
This is just with Dan. So we are replacing Ronald Donella as treasurer and manager with Rebecca Cooksey.
Exactly.
Okay. And so this is all done at the corporate level. Okay, any questions?
I'm good.
You two good? Yes.
I'm just checking. Okay.
I move that the board approve the change of treasurer and LLC manager to Rebecca Cooksey for Anthony's Cold Fired Pizza at 119 University Ave.
Is there an effective date of that change? Is it effective as of our vote? Is that how it works, Nora?
I believe that's the case.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Aid to the Elderly request for matching funds. Hello, Pam.
Hello.
Hi, Pam.
So I'm here tonight on behalf of the Aid to the Elderly Committee to ask for a distribution from your reserve account in the amount of $55,000. The Aid to the Elderly Committee has reviewed all the applications for FY '19, and they're ready to make the distribution to the applicants. And this would be the second year that you've matched what has been raised in donations from residents in the town. This will allow the distribution to be right in line with where it was last year, about $100,000 to approximately 40 residents in town. This is the 20th year that the town has had this program in place, and we talked about last year that it's really just such a great program and really, you know, does more than what some of our other neighboring communities has done. It's really tremendous. We appreciate the donations that our residents and businesses in town have made. We appreciate that the selectmen can match the distribution that's been made. So what this is, we'll provide for a payment directly towards the tax bill of some of our residents in town. The typical recipient is about 88 years old, has lived in the town for over 60 years, living in a very modest, valued home, you know, in neighborhoods that are changing around them. It's a very valuable program. The committee has sifted through all of the applicants, feels very good about the list. And again, this is in line with where they've been the last couple of years, but really, I think is one of those special programs that the town of Westwood has that's really trying to help residents in the community, and the recipients of this are so appreciative.
So Pam, having served on the committee, I could say, I mean, we really did vet this, and, you know, thank you to those that reach out in town because some people won't reach out because they're too shy and don't want to, you know, really let people know that they're having tough times. But I think, you know, to all the committee members, and I'm sure you relay this back, that we thank them for their, you know, spending the time to go through and identifying these people that really need our help, so...
And the committee has tried to make sure that we're getting this information out. We do a stuffer every quarter in our tax bill. We do a direct mailing in the fall. And we not only ask for donations, but we try to really give information on how people can apply. So if someone knows that their neighbor might be interested. And then our council on aging and our veterans departments really do a great job in trying to identify people who may be. Because as you said, there's some who just may not want to come forward, but it's really the program that's designed for them.
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Have you seen this level of need plateau?
We, you know, as much as we've tried to go out and gather more applicants, we've been at about the same number each year. And this year was very typical. We have four or five recipients who lead the program. Either they move out of town or they pass away, and then about the same number has come on. So the last couple of years, we've been at a steady amount with some new people each year. So it kind of changes, but seems to be that this is the right, you know, approximate amount. So we've not had a greater need or a lessening need. It's been about the same, but with a little bit different makeup each year.
So I remember last year, the first year we were able to match, which was a major step forward, and how touched people were by receiving the added benefit. Is there a need for us to try to go even further with this? Or what's your assessment of that, of the need? Because, I mean, what we're trying to do is help people stay in their homes.
Yes.
Is what it comes down to.
Yep.
One is identifying the people out there. We're working very hard at that. The other is, we're extremely grateful to the people who donate. But are we hoping we could do even better with the donation side?
We'd love to be able to do a bit better. You know, we'd love to reach out to our corporate partners also in town and see sometimes what may be a small donation for them can make a big difference. We do have kind of many regular donations from different residents in town who maybe give somewhat small amount. Every time they pay their tax bill, they give an amount or they give an annual amount. They'll even enclose a letter saying, "I'm happy to contribute to this." And those add up, but, you know, if we could kind of do a little bit better, you know, reaching out maybe some larger groups to see, you know, if they could do it as some type of donation, that can really help boost the account. But the payment, many of the recipients in this program, we're not trying to satisfy all of their financial needs or interests. This program tries to help them with that tax bill and pay a portion directly towards their annual tax bill. A lot of the recipients in this group are also in other programs that the town may have. Veterans programs or other kind of state programs for taxes. Many of them do the tax work-off program and provide, you know, thousands of hours over the years in volunteer work for the town and schools to participate. So there's always more we can do. It's a very, you know, when you look, part of the vetting process is they do have to submit some financial information, tax returns, and some of our tax experts on the committee go through that. So they're a very deserving group, and it would always be terrific.
So I guess we need to think about how we can, with respect to, people get asked to do a lot of things, how we can ask people to do more for this. And I just think we need to be creative. But I think that people donate to this and have incentivized us as a community to match it is really extraordinary. It's something that we all should be very proud of.
And we try to share some of the feedback that we get in the reporting that we do in this committee, but it really, we've said before, the recipients are not only, you know, very grateful for the financial aid that they receive, but they really feel that the community is, you know, recognizing them, wants to help them, wants to keep them in the community, you know, appreciates what they've done for the community and wants to keep them here as part of town.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Okay, so I would move that the board authorize an expenditure of $55,000 to match the Aid to the Elderly account.
From the select board's reserve account?
From the select board's reserve account, thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll see you at your next meeting. Back to budget, just getting near the tail end of that process.
Oh, good. Can't wait.
We got a little breather, right? Okay. Next, we have the Massachusetts School Building Authority Feasibility Study Agreement. So this is for, to authorize the chair to sign and submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Hanlon School Project. This is just the feasibility study. Town meeting already gave us the votes to authorize the funding, so this is just to continue the paperwork, I guess, with the MSBA. Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, I had asked you today, and I just want to ask in public sessions that, public session, that there is a clause in here that says that the town will need to provide a certified copy of the vote of the local governing body authorizing the town to enter into and be bound by the FSA, which is the feasibility study agreement. Where required by local charters, ordinances, or bylaws. And your response to me was that we don't have that requirement?
In our charter?
In our charter.
Or we don't have ordinance.
Okay, so our vote tonight is essentially...
The same thing.
Putting us in compliance.
It's basically a vote that the chief executive authority of the community, which is the select board, I got it right, has the authority to sign contracts such as this, locking the town into the terms of that contract. So you do have the authority. And by signing the, authorizing by vote of the chairman to sign on behalf of the town and providing them with a signed copy, we're told by the state, that will satisfy that requirement.
I guess the only thing I would add, too, is although we're talking about the Paul Hanlon School, we're not necessarily talking about the Paul Hanlon site.
Correct.
Correct.
Talking about a school. So this doesn't bind the town to anything other than continuing the study?
Something that happens for the Hanlon School somewhere.
And potentially another school. The feasibility study itself is to study optional locations and various combinations.
Okay, yeah, we're fine.
Okay, so I move that the board authorize Michael Walsh as chair of the select board to sign the memorandum of agreement. Further, that Tom McCusker sign as the chief legal counsel, confirming the board of selectmen as the chief executive officers and affirming the charter and bylaws authorize the town to sign such documents, and to have the town administrators offer send all legal items requested by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, including the signed feasibility study agreement and legal counsel certification forward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Technical snafu. Okay. Next, we have our Farm Lane, Pleasant Valley, Fieldstone Turning Restriction Discussion. What's that? So this is, Mike, you want to discuss further the restriction on traffic turning onto Farm Lane?
So as a result of the last meeting where the board discussed this option with the residents of primarily Fieldstone Road and Pleasant Valley, residents further along on Farm Lane became aware of the meeting, have had discussions. We've gotten a couple of letters. I don't know if people are here that authored those letters. I did speak with one today. Who said she wasn't going to... Oh, okay. So they're here. And they basically sympathize, expressed sympathy for the increased traffic on those streets, but relayed the fact that no right-hand turn on Fox Hill Street onto Farm Lane will seriously impact them and their accessibility to their homes. They're not impacted by the extra traffic that is going to Route 109, but some of them have children in the school, Deerfield School, for instance, and take their child to school and come back during the time that restrictions will be there, feel that they would be necessarily having to travel on Route 109 to get back to their homes, so to take a left from Fox Hill Street rather than a right. The officers are not likely to trick at them, but it's not likely to be the same officer every day, and officers will be dealing with a lot of traffic on that street. So if they were to turn onto the street, they'd have to go through the inconvenience of being stopped, questioned, before they were allowed to go. Another example was given by another author of a letter that her husband works out, comes back during that period of time. Same situation. So what the residents further along Farm Lane were indicating is that that was a problem. Now, you will recall that at the time, I helped, or I suggested a wording, and you used it, which was to say that there's traffic going down Pleasant Valley and Fieldstone Road. And if we're going to implement something, we should implement something that's sensitive to everybody. I was kind of aware that this was going to be a potential problem. So we haven't, what I've explained to the individual that I spoke to today is we haven't worked out exactly how this would work and the fact that it would work only when the extra travel lane was on High Street, which they were, they understood, but I think they're here to express the fact that they have some problems with what was suggested or adopted at the last meeting. I don't know if either of the two individuals want to add to that or anybody else that might be here.
If you do, unfortunately, you have to come up to a microphone.
One on that side.
Okay.
Not for us, we can hear you, but at home for television, they wouldn't be able to hear you, so...
Good evening, members of the select board, Mr. Town Administrator. My name is Michael Vitale, I live at 310 Farm Lane. I have a couple of issues with the proposed turn restrictions, understanding that there are residents on Pleasant Valley who are impacted by what we've seen as a cut through to 109, the entirety of my time in Westwood, which has been about nine years. My concern is that I'm not going to be allowed to turn onto my street during hours where I take my daughters to either the high school or the middle school and then have to return back home before work. I have further concern that permitting residents to turn, the Farm Lane residents to turn there only, would create an enforceability problem for police officers where they would have to... have to basically stop everybody and inquire as to whether or not you were a resident and force them to make the decision as to whose car that is that's turning on. And really, the, create a difficult task for police officers to enforce the restriction of a turn from Fox Hill to Farm Lane. If the concern is to cut through on Pleasant Valley, what I would suggest is no left turn onto Pleasant Valley from Farm Lane or no left turn during those hours for those, for those members of my neighborhood that have complained about the traffic and have concerns about the traffic. There really, there's about three houses or four houses on Farm Lane before that turn, and the majority of the people who are concerned are on Pleasant, are on Pleasant Valley at that first left-hand turn off of Farm Lane. I think moving the restriction to Pleasant Valley would assist the individuals who have raised this concern without impacting the rest of our neighborhood. I know that for those of us who live beyond the turn at Fieldstone, it would create a great difficulty returning back to our homes during those hours of restriction, especially when you're traveling to the high school to then have to travel down Manhattan to 109, travel the length of 109 to turn back into our neighborhood, what normally would be a five-minute journey would turn into a 30 or 40-minute journey. And I think that further discussion is necessary. Another concern that I haven't voiced with my neighbors and I really haven't voiced is I wonder what it will do to the traffic on Fox Hill, and I don't know if there's any, been any study into what it will do. For the people who would normally turn onto Farm Lane and then cut over on Pleasant Valley, they'll all be lining up on that downhill on Fox Hill, and who knows how far that will back up, given the number of cars. And I don't know if a traffic study has been done to even consider that, but it was something that I would urge the board to consider before they took any action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eileen Cutfilia.
Yes, please.
I think you can hear my voice.
You can, but not on the telephone.
People at home can't hear.
People at home want to hear what you have to say.
My name is Eileen Cutfilia. I'm also a resident of Farm Lane. I actually agree, and I think my email that I sent in earlier today hits every single point that Mike Vitale pointed out. And then the only thing I would add that concerns me is it starts to set a precedent that I don't think we want in Westwood where a resident feels that they need to be policed, whether they can return at any time to their own street as a taxpaying citizen to, you know, these are public access roads as far as we know today. And that just kind of, I think, is a concern too, that how long do you keep that? Is it for the, you know, if I live here, I've lived here 20 years, another 20 years, do I need to in those hours make sure I stop in with a police officer to go home? I don't know that that's the best message either to be sending to our residents. So that's the only thing I want to add.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Sullivan from Farm Lane. The only thing, I agree with everything that's been said. The only thing I'll ask is if this was done as a trial, which I think is what was proposed, how would you evaluate it at the end of that trial to determine if it was a success? You would probably have less cars on Pleasant Valley, so is that a success? But you've jammed up Fox Hill. So how do you have a trial without knowing how you're going to measure the end result?
Well, I suppose that we will hear from the neighbors at the end of the 60 days as to what worked and what didn't work.
No.
And from the police.
Yeah, no, the measure of success, I mean, a couple of things. I think there's a lot of misinformation. Resident-only signs don't work. I mean, you're all kind of validating why this is a bad idea to begin with. The literature would say this is a bad idea for all the reasons you're saying. The elephant in the room is what has evolved with GPS and Waze and other systems is just this untenable volume. So we have a data point that says in 90 minutes, you have 400 cars going down this side street. So we should try something, right? But the real measure will be if we couple this with the additional, it's not going to be, it's an additional lane. We're not widening 109, but we're restriping 109. So there'll be a measure of the pace at which cars are getting through those lights. And we would have people study, does the impact of one less stoppage, that exit out of Pleasant Valley, is that helping with the flow coupled with the two lanes? That would be the variable. So I don't think it has anything to do with actually the number of cars in the neighborhood. I think ultimately, the measure is going to be the flow on 109. The flow on 109 is the root cause. People go through these side streets into the neighborhoods because 109 doesn't move.
I think, I understand, but I think you'd have to do a pre-study of what is it like at Gay Street and High Street now? What is it like by the Deerfield School right now?
We have that.
What is it like at Fox Hill?
We have that.
Okay.
Data going through the neighborhood. We don't have Gay Street. Gay Street wasn't part of the collection, but the pool of data that was collected was off, strictly up Fox Hill going down Farm through Pleasant Valley.
But in the summer of 2018 or 17, it's all a blur now, we did, we did, we did some amendments to some of the light time signals, and we had beta study, how far back is the traffic at the Dunkin' Donuts space? And when you, when you increase the flow with the light signals, did that decrease? So we do have some data points, so it'll be the comparison of the data so far with the data once we have this implemented with an additional lane.
Okay. Did you say you did the study in the summer? Because we all know traffic is very different in this way.
I don't know exactly what time of year it was done, but...
The data that we compiled specifically for Farm Lane, Pleasant Valley, and Fieldstone was done during season. It wasn't during the summer. We don't conduct any traffic counts during the summer for obvious reasons.
And then more specifically, the one that John's referring to is the one we did when we were, when Beta was assisting us in the timing of the light.
And that specifically was done within season too, traffic season, not during the summertime.
Okay. Thank you.
But to clarify, the vote that was made before, was it to do the left turn restriction at the same time as the restriping and opening up of 109 or subsequent to?
Right, subsequent to.
The word subsequent was inserted, so we could get the improvements made on High Street, so that the traffic would be flowing, and then re-encourage the people who were taking the cut through to go back to High Street. And if they had a good experience, we'd expect they would stay on High Street. There's no guarantee they will, they'll have a good experience because that much more traffic will be going on, so it's kind of a catch.
I saw a question about school buses. Everything has to be prohibited, right? Including school buses?
That's my understanding.
We haven't spoken to the school department yet on that.
We spoke with Paul Cigars last week, the Public Safety Officer.
But has he spoken to the school department yet?
No, because we haven't, we haven't figured out exactly what we're going to be doing. But we would, what we normally do when we have a detour, a traffic restriction that goes on the streets for whatever reason, is we'll meet with the bus coordinators and make sure that the routes are...
That means they're going to have to go on 109 though, right?
Yep.
And I think one, one thing I just wanted to mention to your assumption that if the left turn restriction was internal to the neighborhood, cars that met up with the restriction would have to get out and they'd be on your Farm Lane route, turning around.
My, my ideal situation is there is no turn restriction.
I know, I'm just telling you what will happen if there is.
And I, I agree that the residence only, I mean, my concern about that is it doesn't work and it is unenforceable without...
Well, I don't think it'll be unenforceable. I don't know, see, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I mean, I read one of the emails that we were doing this for nine months. I don't even know where that came from. And I think we've said all along, there can be no exceptions. The police will not enforce an exception-based restriction.
They need a bright line rule, and I understand.
There'll be a, right.
The school buses, though, I can tell you right now, both of my daughter's school buses take that turn from Fox Hill onto Farm Lane.
That'll have to be worked out.
And as it is, my high school daughter gets picked up at her bus stop at 6:55 in the morning, and imagine adding more traffic or a longer route for the bus means she's going to be picked up even earlier. I think that while I understand the concerns of my neighbors on Pleasant Valley, that hastily putting a restriction in without looking at alternatives is inappropriate at this point in time.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to just, I, my fear is that, you know, there's like kind of this neighbor against neighbor, which is one of the reasons you don't do this, but I don't want it to be that. It's a huge issue throughout town. I mean, I drive it every day. It takes me, this morning, I specifically did it from police headquarters at 7:45. It took me 15 minutes to get through down there. I mean, it's not good for the town.
So I...
So I don't, let me just finish. So I don't, I don't really want this to be like us against them. There's a problem. There's a problem. And I understand it's going to create a problem for you, I hear that, but we kind of are trying to look a little more holistically and say, hopefully that bus won't sit on 109 because there'll be better flow.
So I don't think that the people, the majority of people who take that cut through are coming off of 109 onto whatever to get to Fox Hill. I think they're coming from the other side of town, coming through Thatcher or Milk down Gay and turning onto Fox Hill that way. And so I don't know that putting, putting, making 109 faster is necessarily going to deter them from heading that way and heading down Fox Hill.
So I will tell you, I live at one of the furthest points west on 109. I leave my house between 6:00 AM and 8:00 AM every day. I am in a steady flow of people, and they all take the right on Pond, the right on Clapwood Tree, the left on Thatcher, the left on Gay. It's a steady stream. It's towns west of us. I do think there are people, I see them also coming up Gay Street from the Washington Street corridor. Those are the people we'd like to incentivize to go back.
Sure.
And go down Washington Street to 128. But a lot of this is, we don't know. Like, we don't know what we don't know.
And I guess that's my, my suggestion and perhaps what my neighbors were saying. If we don't know, should we really be just trying something without knowing what the alternatives are? And I do think you're going to create a problem on Fox Hill, and I do think it'll create problems for, for school buses, problems for...
I agree. We historically, Westwood has not gone down this path. This door was opened, and here we are.
And here I am because I...
You want to talk, Michael? As the initiator?
And I don't, I don't doubt for a moment that the select board is trying to make things better for the entire community, and I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't figure out a way to make 109 faster. We all would like to not sit in traffic on 109. But I would still like to be able to turn onto my street after I drop my kids off at school, and I don't know how you can do that with an exception-based system. As everybody's noted, it just doesn't work. And, and if you're going to have a bright line rule, no turns, that means not me, not my neighbors, not the school buses. And I don't know that that will actually solve the problem, and I don't think anybody knows whether or not that would solve the problem. So just trying it out seems like a step that we shouldn't take until we know better or have better data.
But how would you suggest, you can't model traffic, right? You really can't.
But you can study it at different points.
Right, we have that. We have that data.
We have it for...
We're not jumping in blind.
No, no, we have it for Farm Lane, Pleasant Valley, Fieldstone.
And 109.
But we don't have it for Fox Hill, for Gay Street, for the turn from Gay Street to Fox Hill, and that...
So if we did that study, we came back to you and said, "Look at the volume," you'd say, "Oof, maybe you should do it."
So if you, if you're going to just move the traffic jam from, from people cutting through Pleasant Valley and create now a problem that, at Fox Hill or Gay Street, or, and create another problem that way, I don't know how that will solve the problem. It'll just move the problem. And I, I think we should know the answer to that before we try to move the problem.
I think, I think what you're asking us to do is to really put the answer before the question, and you can't do that. You have to, you have to try and then see what works. It's always trial and error with traffic. Lots of people make lots of money doing this, and it's because they're trial and error. And, you know, they're trying to see what will work, and that's why we're not doing anything until the extra lane is added down at the end. So you're right, if, if nothing was changing, then we probably wouldn't do it because nothing is changing.
Well, would it be possible to wait to make a decision about traffic restrictions until we see what is happening with the restriping of 109?
Well, our decision was subsequent to, so we haven't decided when it's going to happen.
Right, so could subsequent to be after a period of time where we see what the difference is on 109 so that we do have some more information?
Well, that's, I mean, we haven't made the decision when it's going to happen yet. So we, we can't tell you when that's going to be. All we know is once it's done, then we can see how things flow and then decide to put the restriction in. We've left that door open.
I don't have an answer for you either, but I do think that we shouldn't create a new problem to solve this problem.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we're creating a new problem. One of the biggest impediments to flow at that end of 109 in the morning is the 400 cars that are exiting Pleasant Valley in a 90-minute period. I drive it every day. It is, it's the, they block. It's like, it's like the green lights up ahead, no one can move because these people have to cut in. If you cut that off, you've now eliminated 400 cars at the peak hour from impeding the flow. That, that's a solution. Whether it works in actuality, we'll have, I'll have to see. But to say that we're just creating another problem, I think it's mischaracterized.
Well, but the 400 cars are going to go down Fox Hill and turn there.
You don't know that. You don't know that. They may go down Gay Street to Washington Street, right? We don't know.
They might.
These are people who seek out the fastest route. They're not going to sit for 15 minutes on Fox Hill.
Well, but we're also assuming that those 400 cars are going to go away, and I don't think they are.
They're not going to go away. We want them to find alternative routes.
Which will be alternative streets within our town.
No, not necessarily. I disagree. If you tomorrow drive Gay Street when you drop your kids off at the high school, you will see people coming from like Pine Lane and Islington up Gay, turning right on Farm Lane. An alternative for those people is to head out to Dedham, to head out to 128 near Legacy, to head out to Route 1 down East Street. There, we, there is a thought that those people will find alternatives that are better than cutting through Pleasant Valley.
But we don't know.
We don't know. We'll agree on that.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on this. To relieve a town problem on 109, you're going to single out a community and tell them that as an equal-paying taxpayer, they cannot access their street. When you have multiple cut-throughs just in this area of town, Connet Road has had an issue that they've complained about, right? They put in the speed bumps, but they've got people cutting through there all the time. Thatcher becomes a nightmare in the morning with people cutting through. This street is a nightmare with people cutting through. I used to live on Deerfield for 13 years, and people came down at 100 miles an hour and almost killed my daughter and I one day, driving, walking, walking to the Deerfield. And nobody told them they couldn't turn down their street. I really think you're setting a bad precedent by doing this to residents, and I absolutely empathize, and to suggest that it's neighbor against neighbor is completely false. It's a great neighborhood and everybody, you know, we have parties together and it's a great place to live, and people are very sympathetic to it, and they do want to solve it, but I think at the expense of other residents is a big mistake. And especially to hear that the school buses, and you have these kids who are getting up at an ungodly hour and being picked up, and those routes were created for the safety of the kids in terms of how they come into the streets and where they get on and off the bus, now has to be completely changed for people who are trying to get to work. I just, I think it's a really big mistake, so.
Thank you. Thank you, we'll take another, take another advisement. We haven't done anything yet. We've only talked about it, so. Maybe if 109 gets fixed, it'll stop a lot of people all by itself, so we'll have to see.
Well, I, I think we need to be honest, though. We took a vote.
We did take a vote, yes.
And you said it would start in May?
No, we said it would start after 109 was done.
After the date of May.
Right. And obviously, it would make more sense to try it while people are here. I mean, we wouldn't start it in June, knowing that people will be away June and July, although we might. Because why? Because those people are still going to work regardless of the school buses. If you stop it during the summertime, we don't have the school bus issue.
Should I go back to the microphone?
Yes, if you have something else to say, yes, please. Again, it's not for us, we can hear you, but those at home would not be able to hear your comments.
I think Eileen did a fantastic job saying, "Why are you singling out our street?" I know a survey was done in the neighborhood. I did not participate in the survey, I wasn't invited to. I really think Farm Lane, anybody who signed that did not expect this. They expected relief for their neighbors and friends on Pleasant Valley.
I would recommend that you read the petition.
I never saw it. So what I, what I would recommend is I need to talk to every house on Farm Lane prior and get that information back to you. I mean, in the past two days, I tried to, did the best I could, but I don't think people on Farm Lane know what's coming, so.
Okay, well, we, we have time.
Yeah, Mike, just so, my view of the world is not Farm Lane and Pleasant Valley. My view of the world is improving the quality of life for people who have to use 109.
Probably the opposition here.
Stunk at the garden party?
Wonderful, wonderful Petri dish of, of community. So I'm Trevor Schmansky, by the way. I'd love to talk to each of you. Kathy, thank you. Kathy was one of the, one of the individuals who replied to email, and we, we talked about this a couple, about a month ago, where we had not all 70 households that we went and were able to talk to people. We captured 52 households, which is two or three of us dads walking around getting signed petitions. Of the 52 we were able to capture, which we went down to the pond, right there, just past the pond, we had three. And Kath, you were one of them, I believe?
I'm not recalling what you're talking about.
You had emailed my wife that you were not interested in the no-right turn. So we counted your, your, more or less, vote. Mike and others, I didn't get a chance to make it down that far. Our concern is, parents, you're right, on Pleasant Valley, on Farm Lane, and on the surrounding roads were what we observed through Pleasant Valley with the speeding and the volume of folks that had come through. We looked at a bunch of options. I'd love to talk to them all individually with you. Our concern is, what are we going to do today? Knowing that this is the solution. The 109 widening and the light timing is a solution. My wife also does the same thing you do, and it would impact us. And of all the dynamics associated with it, I think the last, I think it was February 4th or 6th we all met, we agreed that it was a very short-term solution. I think it was two months. So it was very temporary, until some of these things were actually put into place. And this journey that we've, some of us residents in our neighborhood have been on, has been a two-year journey, I think. Todd, right, we started this back in, gosh, the beginning of 2017, and that's why we got to this point. I'm thankful that we came and had this conversation today to talk about all of the residents on there. But I do want, for the record, to state that of the 70 households, which we got to 52, we didn't get all the way down Farm Lane, we had 95% of those 52 that said they would be in support of this petition. And that, again, got down to the houses just past the pond, not all the way down Farm Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to be continued. To be continued. Nothing will happen yet, so that's the only thing we can tell you at this point in time. We promised to let you know way in advance of, of anything happening, okay? Thank you. Okay, moving along. Tax incremental financing discussion. Nora, Dan, would you like to come up and join us?
Can you introduce Jared and Michael?
Excuse me?
Jared and Michael are behind you. Good citizen.
So we have two representatives from Citizens Bank. We'd like to introduce Michael Nipper and Jared Wallace. They're here to support us in the discussions we'll have about the tax increment financing proposal that's before you. When we discussed this at your last meeting on February 4th, we discussed it as an unknown entity, a business that was proposing 100,000-square-foot office building in University Station, and had proposed a TIF offer. And we asked the board to consider a counteroffer, which you then considered. The business is Citizens Bank. They're looking to consolidate locations they have in surrounding towns into a single building in Westwood. And they're asking you to consider the, the TIF counteroffer that was informally made to Citizens based on individual discussions with the board members after the February 4th meeting.
Okay. And so we're using Exhibit A, so the one that we're proposing?
Yes, so the proposal is for a schedule of tax increment financing relief that would be over a 15-year period. The Citizens Bank is, has negotiated a 15-year lease for the property with New England Development and National Development, with scheduled options for renewal of that 15-year term. They're looking to stay long-term, but the initial term of the lease is 15 years, so the tax increment financing program would be 15 years as well. The schedule that is proposed for the counterproposal actually gives a, an exemption for the first 13 of those 15 years. It disappears towards the end of the schedule.
So Dan, how long have we been at this?
Trying to get a large office user, University Avenue.
Yes.
Since when you were on?
I was on the Economic Development Board, and that was at least 15 years ago. You know, that, this has been a goal of the town for a very long time. You know, the, you know, the TIF agreement that you're being asked to support is, you know, I know these things can be controversial, but for better or worse, they're very typical of what is offered by municipalities in Massachusetts. You know, it's, it's a competitive market, particularly for suburban office space. So, you know, this is, you know, Mike and Nora and I have talked about it ad nauseam. Every time we talk to developers down there, we're always, when are we going to get office development? You know, so we've, we've got a big corporate office user, you know, in conjunction with another office user that the planning board is, you know, may, may, you know, vote on tomorrow night, another 40,000 square feet. So this starts to potentially, if it goes forward, round out University Station.
So, yeah, so do you want to speak? I mean, the reason I, I like A is because of the four years and where we will be with the elementary school. I think that would be our, the point where we'd be probably going out for a bond if it, if it were to pass, you know, for the school.
And just, you know, so that the, the people at home understand, what Exhibit A says is, it has a schedule of 15 years for the, the tax reduction. And the first year is a very substantial reduction, it's 95%. It goes down to 75% in years two and three, then goes down to 25% in years four through 13. So it's front-loaded.
Right.
And within, you know, by year four, the town is getting 75% of the full and fair assessed property value for that, that project.
And year 14 and after, we get...
You get 100%.
Correct.
And just to clarify, that that exemption is on the incremental tax increase. So the taxes that are already accruing on the property as a vacant property would continue 100%, and the discount would be just towards the tax. It would be attributed to the, to the new building that would be there. Taxes that wouldn't be available to the town if the building wasn't constructed.
So I'll just make a couple of comments. First, I want to thank you both for being here, and thank you for your interest in Westwood. What Mike was referring to is something that we've talked a little bit about, is how do we evaluate the benefits of this transaction when we're actually giving up some taxes at the same time? Something I had brought up, and I'm not sure we combined future boards or the town, but is that the town is looking at elementary school building project that, once it gets through a long process, because we're partnering with the School Building Authority at the state level, we could see this as an opportunity to have some new revenue that potentially could be applied towards the cost of that building project. So that's what makes it, from a timing standpoint, particularly interesting. I know I'd been asking that we find a way to indicate that interest now to a future board. I'm not sure we can vote to actually bind. We can't. We can indicate...
Well, we could, but they can just vote to undo it, so.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think having the discussion and putting it out there is the right thing to do. The circumstances when a decision is actually made could change, and we want to be cognizant of that. But it does, does help us overcome some, at least for me, the concern that we're doing something where we're foregoing some of the tax benefit, but at the same time, you bring something to the table, you help to round out the project, and, and hopefully become a partner in town in, in things that we do. So there, there are a lot of things that come into this. Unfortunately, or whatever, the dollars seem to rise to the top in terms of how we look at it. But I just, I think overall, it can be very beneficial to the town. The timing is, is very intriguing, and I think we've come to a place where we can both live with the outcome. You may be want more, we want less, we have to find a place to come to an agreement. That's usually the way things go like this, so we have to figure out where we can land. And I think we have a very viable proposal before us that looks at some substantial benefits to the town, and Mike, you included in our packet, that it also helps us with our split tax rate to boost the commercial value of properties in town, which is, for a small community like ours, which is heavily residential, it's always important to keep an eye on the commercial. It's something we've spent a lot of time and effort on over the years. So that is yet another benefit that is not inconsequential, which contributes to the decision that I think we'll be making, or some of us will support.
So I would say, I think, talking about how we're going to spend money, that we have no authority to even enter into this agreement, is really secondary. I think we all want a great new school, and we all want to find ways to pay for it, but that has nothing to do with the discussion ahead of us. We, we don't actually have the authority to enter into a TIF as we sit here tonight. But before we go there, I think it's important for us to recognize, TIFs were tax incentive financing intended, when this was written by economists, to help towns that were struggling and couldn't get investors in buildings, and could say to people, instead of paying property taxes, build a building in our town, and we'll forego money. This is a year we are, for the first time, crossing $100 million on our budget. We have drawn down our reserves on capital. We are spending all of our meals and tax money, all for great projects. We're levying a full tax to every resident in Westwood. We are having every business in Westwood, whether they're the High Street Market or Wegmans, pay their full fair share. This is incredibly inequitable. And so you can move beyond the equity discussion and say, well, it's a balancing of interests. And the interests are, we're guaranteed some cash versus risking no cash, right? We're going to forego all this money. I, I can't get myself there. It feels very self-defeating. We are giving, you know, we're not talking about a small mom-and-pop investor in Westwood who is struggling, who comes to us and says, "Hey, if you give me a break on taxes, I can build a new building." This is a $160 billion corporation. And I just don't know how we're looking at people who struggle to live in this town, how we're looking at small businesses, and, and explaining this. I just, I can't get myself there. I philosophically think it's wrong.
Can I ask you, John, how can you get there with Brigham and Women's Hospital but not with...
Very simply. Brigham and Women's had nothing to do with taxes.
Yes, it did.
Nope. Michael, can I answer?
Sure.
Because they have, you, you really need to understand this. Brigham and Women's operates as a not-for-profit entity. That's a structure that exists under law.
Okay.
This board has nothing to do with that structure. They won't pay property taxes if they move into any vacant building in Westwood. They'll pay no property taxes if they move into any building in any municipality in Massachusetts. In the development agreement at University Station, there was an agreement that the developer would not enter into an agreement with a not-for-profit. The only relief we gave was to allow a not-for-profit entity to be sited there. And I think what's important is Brigham and Women's is bringing over 100,000 people, a dynamic customer base, a changing customer base, to University Station on an annual basis. This is 600 static employees. This does nothing to add to the dynasties of University Station. So they couldn't be different. And Brigham had so many more positives than this will ever have.
Well, was it a blighted area that we gave up three acres at University Station?
We didn't give up any acres. They paid, they paid over $8 million.
$8 million for three acres in Westwood and one in Canton.
So I just wanted to provide a little historical perspective, if I might, for a moment. Back when we got our first authorization to enter into TIFs at University Station, it was not under the conditions that you were mentioning. It was really to attract office users to an area that heretofore only had one large office user. Well, maybe, there were some that were winding down. Boston Globe was there, but we had N-Star, now Eversource. We needed to, in our effort to create a mixed-use development, incentivize office as one of the key elements. And in large part, that commercial tax base, which, I know you know this, John, so this is not, I'm not trying to invite a counterpoint, but when we look at this opportunity to support the commercial tax base and the split tax rate, we are looking out for everybody in the town in terms of residential, because if we lose that split tax rate, residential taxes will go up significantly. So I just, I want to underscore that point. But back to my first one, when we agreed to consider tax increment financing and we received town meeting authorization to do so, we really needed to be competitive in an office industry, an office market, where we weren't historically competitive. We're not a blighted area. I know exactly what you're talking about, and I remember speaking to somebody in town who has a business in Brockton. And TIFs were offered quite frequently for small businesses to be able to incentivize them to be there at all. And that's the TIF that's probably more well-known to people. But if we're going to be competitive in an office market where we're secondary to Waltham and Needham, Burlington in some cases, we can be an afterthought. This is how we can be in the running. Now, I know Citizens was not looking at Needham's and further up 128, but more looking in our neighboring communities. They too had the opportunity to offer TIFs. And so to be competitive, this, this is where we are. So I just want to add that perspective. We're not a cohesive board at this point on this matter, that's clear. I think that we all have our reasons. We never come to any decision because we're all exactly in agreement. If we're all saying yes or all saying no, in this case, we're not unified. But I think we have enough support of this that I believe we can go forward with it. We are looking for town meeting to give us new authorization. We don't have to have that, but it becomes very clunky if we don't, and we want that. We want town meeting, as they have in the past, to tell the board again that we have the authorization to do what we think is in the best interests of the town. I know my consideration is absolutely in the best interests of the town. It doesn't mean it's perfect, but I think we know enough to be able to proceed with this tonight.
Do you have anything else?
No. Can I say a few words about...
Sure, Mr. Gillett.
A few words that Citizens provided, and I'd just like to point them out. For this particular site in University Avenue, they've given a lot of, a lot of credit to their, their work with the developer, National Development, which worked very hard with them diligently in trying to find a lease arrangement for this new building. And they're very happy with that, and they were looking to us to work with them on the tax gap that they would have with their alternative location, in particular in Norwood. The project will employ over 100 people during the construction phase of this project, so there's an economic benefit there. And they will be relocating 600 of their employees that are currently in other locations around us into one central location near our park, where they'll enjoy the amenities that that provides. They're very conscious about their energy efficiency and their, and their impact on the environment in another location on Johnson Campus. They do all kinds of activities, like there are no trash cans, I understand, at any of the desks to reduce the waste. They got composable containers in our cafeteria, in their cafeteria. And so they do a lot in the energy side. For the community, in addition to the taxes that they would pay in being here and being good citizens and that sort of thing, they also do things in any, any community that they're located in. They spend $400 annually to support community programs and events in the community and charitable foundations. They spend $921,000 on matching gifts, on a one-to-one match. They have 370 people that reach through financial literacy programs in the community they work in, and they have 133 volunteer hours that their, that their employees devote to not-for-profit organizations, so they...
133,000.
Thousand, thousand, sorry. Thousand, thousand, sorry. So they basically, they want to stress that they're a very good citizen in addition to all that's been mentioned. So I think that.
No pun intended.
Yeah. I think that having them in a very visible site on the top of that hill will be a boon to this community as far as people being able to see and industry, other office users seeing, that this is a good location with a good visibility from the highway. When you come down the highway when you're coming home, certainly you see it all the time, you can see these companies. The sign will be measured, it won't be as large as they probably would like, but it will be a noticeable addition to that hill.
So, Mike, how much money, has anyone figured it out roughly in taxes? If we go, let's choose their numbers. Did you figure that out?
Over the course of 15 years.
Yes.
It estimates that they would be contributing $5.5 million in taxes. And the $16.5 million in value, like Ms. Hyde mentioned, to me, the taxes.
How much are we foregoing?
What's that?
How much are we foregoing?
2.5.
Okay.
But we're actually, by saying no, we're actually foregoing 5.5, because we never know what's coming after.
That's we never know, right?
We never know. The other thing that I will mention, though, and it's the most important goal that I keep stressing over and over and over, is that, well, the taxes are great, that's important, it's a wonderful item, but more importantly, for this community to maintain its split tax rate, to maintain that $1,300 annual reduction in the tax level that it would otherwise be on a single tax rate for our average resident in this community, that split tax rate depends on commercial value. And in my course of 31 years, I've gone from seeing that at 34% at its high when I first got here in 1987, to now just around 15, just under 15%. It was as low as 13% a few years ago. So University Avenue has been ratcheting that back up, and this would be one more addition to that ratchet back up. Remember, our goal is to try to get back to 20. And so, losing these opportunities, in any way we can seize these opportunities going forward, I think that it's very important, very important.
And how many TIFs have we made in the last couple of years? We've made three, right? Three proposals?
We've only given one TIF in the entire time that we've been here. We've, we've had.
It's been a few years since we.
We've had three proposals.
Three or four years.
Over the last three or four years. Since, in University Station project, we've had three proposals.
Three proposals. The last one was in 2014.
Right.
So it's been five years since we've even had a business that was interested in talking to us about a TIF.
And what happened to those three proposals?
We lost.
They went to other locations where they were all offer TIFs.
And Citizens do the same?
Yes, they could.
Yeah, they could.
And we're encouraging them to come here, rather than choose one of those other locations.
There's nothing that binds them, once they could shop this deal?
No.
Can I respond? Can I respond to that? Is that possible?
No.
Yes, you can. The microphone is over there, sir.
So, the bank, just to be clear, we chose, we've had conversations, but we want to come to this town. The offer that has been counteroffer to us is not completely competitive with the offers that we have from other towns. So there's no deal to shop, because the deals that are on the table from other towns are already better. Right now, though, this is the town, this is the perfect site for us, and we've said this all along, to the point where it's hurt our negotiations, but this is the perfect site for us, it's the right town for us. I think we're a great company to come to town, and we've proven that in every site that we've been in, and we're great community partners. I understand the town foregoes taxes versus what it would have been if you landed somebody tomorrow to pay the whole amount. But the reality is, there's a competitive market out there, and as a public corporation, we have to investigate it, and we don't have a choice other than to do that. But to the point of shopping the offer, I want to be clear, this is not the best offer on the table, so there is not an offer to shop.
Thank you. If I could just expand on Michael's answer.
I'm sorry, I had a question for him.
Have you answered?
So you have $160 billion in assets. Why can't you pay the additional $2.5 million?
For a public company, we need to drive as much value out of every deal that we do. It's as simple as that.
So it's just the bottom line?
We're a public company responsible to our shareholders, absolutely.
So if I could just expand on.
So Westwood's losing $2.5 million. You invited the guy, so I just want to.
If, if this TIF is approved, by the fourth year, Westwood will be recouping a minimum of $400,000 a year that it otherwise would not receive. And by the time the citizens would be paying full taxes, that would be over $550,000 a year. Those numbers are based on an early estimate of what Citizens believes the building would be taxed at. The final tax assessment would actually be determined by our tax assessors, could even be more than that. In addition, I'd like to point out that 600 employees spending their days in Westwood will also contribute to the town's meal tax. A significant number of those employees will likely buy food from our restaurants and food service establishments. So there is a significant net benefit to the town that will not be there if this project is not considered.
Also a loss, coupled with a loss.
I think we've covered things pretty well.
All right. Did you want to entertain a motion?
I would like to make.
Well, excuse me, we invited one member of the public. I think we should ask if there's others.
If you don't mind, I'll run the meeting if it's okay with you.
But I don't think it's fair you allowed one member of the public to speak.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the public? Seeing no one. Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. These things are never easy, so I will be happy to make the following motion. I move that we vote to support a tax increment financing warrant article at the upcoming town meeting to reaffirm the board's authority to enter into tax increment financing agreements and special tax assessments with property owners at University Station as a tool to attract commercial development. Further, I move we vote to approve and assign the proposed memorandum of understanding regarding tax increment financing for a 100,000-square-foot office building at University Avenue with, well, we don't need to specify the tenant? Better not to?
The MOU specifies the tenant.
Okay, well, then I'm going to specify in my motion with Citizens Bank. Further, three, to direct town staff and special town council to negotiate and prepare a formal tax increment financing agreement to be executed April 30, 2019, which will be held in escrow pending town meeting approval of the tax increment financing warrant article. And further, to indicate the board's intent, no, I'm not going to do the fourth one. I think our records, the minutes, should show that our discussions have indicated interest in taxes received to support a potential school-building project, but there are a lot of subject twos in there, so I think the motion would get heavily weighted. So for the three items I refer to in the motion, that's my motion.
I will second, out of necessity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have some steps ahead. We need to work with our finance commission to garner their support, which will be very important to our town meeting action in early May.
Thank you.
Do you have any documents to hand to them, or?
Yeah, from the packet.
The packet, he's going to give it. Okay.
Thank you.
Does it have a county sign for Citizens, Dan?
Dan?
Yeah.
Do they need to sign while they're here? Or would it go to them?
Ideally. I mean, I can send it to them. These guys.
I need the developer to sign it, or is it us?
It says you, but I'll send it.
Send it to you, just so you're sure.
Jared, Michael, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the new business, we have an approval of a seasonal CB license for the Bubbling Brook. Any questions?
I move that we approve the new CB license for Bubbling Brook Restaurant for 2019 season upon completion of satisfactory inspections of town departments.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Next, new business, we have the Attorney General's response to the open meeting law complaint. There was two complaints filed by a resident.
These were filed over a year ago?
Yes. And the.
They were a little slow in getting back to us.
They were a little slow, yes. We did everything we needed to do.
The Attorney General's?
Attorney General's Office.
Attorney General's Office. It was very slow. They were embarrassed. I mean, the individual I spoke with was.
Were we made aware of these a year ago?
Yeah, we were. We knew about it.
We?
Yes. You were. And they asked for material, I provided everything they asked for, and it was only recently that they came back and asked for some clarification.
Okay.
Do we need, do we have any action?
We don't, it's kind of like an FYI, should I?
Yeah, it is an FYI.
Read it into the record? I mean, there were two complaints. One that we didn't properly identify the piece of property on Gay Street that we were going to.
Before going into executive session?
Before going into executive session. And the second was something about a land disposition agreement. That one we won. The first one we lost. We need to be more definitive as we describe the properties before going into executive session.
It's not that we didn't describe the one that we were, that was pointed out, that we didn't do it correctly. We did attempt. We struggled with it. We identified it as a parcel of land on Gay Street, to be clear, but we weren't exactly clear of the specific location. And the reason being that it was the Hanlon School, a portion of the Hanlon School property that wasn't attached, really, it was separated by a street we have since Laurel Lane, which was built when we built the four houses, when four houses were built in the back. And we didn't, we didn't say that because, at the same time, we were discussing the Hanlon School project in front of the MSBA, and we felt that people wouldn't know what we were talking about. So we felt uncomfortable about that.
But, the Attorney General is saying we should have identified it.
Yes.
So in hindsight, how would we have identified it so as to not create the problem you're talking about, which would be an address, which would include the Hanlon School, as opposed to a sliver, a sliver of land.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
On the edge, on the outside edge of a driveway that has no impact. So how would we, should we, could we have identified it but not run into the problem you're expressing you were concerned about?
Well, I would guess we'd just probably put both addresses, both the private address and the public address, and say a sliver of land in between, I guess. That would have been more definitive, but.
I don't know. I think, I guess my point is, I think the AG is putting us in a very difficult position by saying we should have, which is, they're right, they've reviewed it, they've done whatever. It's, it's very difficult.
I understand. And what their distinction was, that in this, in the first instance, it was, there was a negotiating position that could qualify in the negotiating position that we would be unfairly burdening ourselves by disclosing. On the other hand, in this instance, it was an unrelated issue that was interfering, or that was bringing us not to identify the parcel more specifically. And they said, if it had been part of the negotiation of the sale of a particular parcel, we could have done it that way.
Does the AG provide on-call assistance when we're making decisions to write these motions for going into executive session? Do they assist on the spot?
They have a day counsel, I think, that we would possibly call. I mean, what we did was rely on town counsel.
I'd like to know, because it's getting so challenging to know if we're doing things in accordance with open meeting requirements, and we are trying to do the right thing.
That's exactly right.
We always, we always try to do the right thing.
The challenge is, if I call the Attorney General's Office, they're probably going to tell me, you know, disclose the exact address.
All the time.
All the time.
They're going to say that.
And let's take, for example, the other situation where we received a complaint that had to do with Islington. And, you know, Mike and I talked about this one a great deal.
Sure.
Because we were in here in executive session repeatedly. And what I said to Mike is, I do not want that disclosed, I do not want the developer to know that we are in here, we can say this now, but that we are in here virtually every meeting trying to hammer this out. That was not easy. And, you know, to me, as a real estate attorney, you know, I'm trained that.
You're paying attention to all the details.
But also that a seller wants to retain as much information as they can.
Right. So if you're advising that.
I understand that this is a public process, and that, you know, we're subject to rules that are a little different than that. But I personally feel pretty strongly that, you know, you've got privilege issues, you've got open meeting law issues, and there's a balancing act there that your lawyer and your advocate is the person in the position to advise you on that, not necessarily someone in, you know, in government.
No, then you get the attorney of the day, they could have two different opinions.
Right.
Exactly.
And so sometimes we're going to be in this position where a complaint is filed, and we're going to be found to have needed to do it differently. We'll continue to do our best, because we are not ever trying to not be in compliance with open meeting law. I think it's a very, it's, there's a high bar, and we're always trying to achieve it.
And let me just go a little bit further, just because I think it's warranted. Understand that there is a very specific exception from the open meeting law for transfers of real estate, leases, sales. It's right there. That's what the statute says. What, the Attorney, the Attorney General's Office takes that a step further, and they say, the burden is on the town to show that not disclosing the specific address is detrimental to the town. You know, they have opinions out there, but there's not a lot of case law on it. And, you know, as your attorney, I think there's some room for interpretation there.
Yeah.
I won't always agree with the Attorney General's Office.
Did the Attorney General's Office always feel this way about disclosing?
No.
So they've evolved.
They have evolved. You know, my opinions on this.
I don't remember this being a requirement with the need to find.
The old days, it wasn't at all.
All we did, all we did was disclose that it was a transaction having to do with real estate.
Yeah.
And we were never questioned.
And that was because it wasn't.
We did all of Westwood Station, all of University Station, the first time around on those issues.
Okay.
It's only been recent that they've been making these more fine-tuned opinions.
Just have to be careful and thoughtful.
Yeah. Yeah. No, we, we need to be very careful about these.
Okay. We'll try to be better.
Yeah. It's not that we don't learn. I mean, we had, we had a challenge, you'll recall, about a year ago, and it was about naming these. That's when we came up with the script, and we added it to the agenda, and we were very clear, and we tried to identify best we can what the issues are, and we're trying to conform, and, you know, every time we think we're there, we've got one of these decisions that we have to now learn some more.
Moving along, we have to review our annual town meeting warrant articles. So, are we removing these?
Yes.
Are we just going to leave additional information for now?
So, we're just leaving them for additional information. There's two, there's the PEG access funding, and we're consulting with counsel in that article.
Can we do that one first, so I can leave on the second one?
And then, excuse me?
Can we do the PEG? Or can we, I need to leave the room for the discussion of the discontinuance of the public way.
Okay.
So I just don't want you to blur those. I need to excuse myself on that.
Okay. So, there's nothing further to say. We have just engaged a new council to help us with the cable, cable renewal and the negotiation of a contract with Westwood Media Center.
So we're not removing that article?
We're not removing that article tonight, no.
Okay.
We may, I'm not going to say we're not.
Tonight, we're not.
But we're not tonight.
Okay. I'll leave on the next one.
So the second one, is it discontinuing the public way?
Yes.
Hedgerow Lane?
And I'd like Nora to just weigh in on this one a little bit more, because she's more familiar.
Oh, Gareth is here.
Yeah. I forgot he was there. Go on forward.
Are we being double-billed?
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no. Gareth, Gareth has been working diligently with Nora and everybody.
Yeah, and on this one, the developer is reimbursing out of the funds for subdivision.
Yeah, exactly. I forgot about that, so.
I'm kind of a freebie today.
Oh, good.
You can ask me all about, you know, I've done two TIFs for Amazon, so.
Citizens isn't the only, like, 800-pound gorilla coming in looking for.
Do you have the Needham TIF? All right, so. All right, so--
Framing, framing him, I think, and some other place, you know.
All right, so what do we need to do on this, Gareth? Because it says we need further action.
Yeah, well, so hopefully we'll have a unanimous board, two-member board on this one, because you've done everything right. But if you recall correctly, this came out of a subdivision in 2016, where you had an existing cul-de-sac with three homes on it, and then a subdivision, and all that was somewhat inconsistent with that cul-de-sac. And so the first thing you did was make sure that the three homeowners, who would be at least somewhat impacted by the discontinuance or abandonment, were on board.
Yeah.
And they were, they entered into an agreement with the subdivision developer. We did that on August 10th. We came back, we did the actual abandonment of the, this small portion of the public way, meaning that we don't have to take care of it anymore, we don't have any liability for it anymore, but in theory, it still exists, it's still a public way. If you ever wanted to come back and reinstate it, you could do that. What we've been asked to do now, and I think what makes sense, given that there's a new subdivision road that'll be more than adequate, is completely discontinue it and erase it forever, so that, for instance, any one of these homeowners, look at their title, you know, they sell their home, they look at their title, there will be no public easement on their property, it'll just be gone, and it'll be like any other property.
Just to expand on that, that's necessary, because in order for these homeowners to have the sufficient amount of frontage on the new Hedgeroe, the old Hedgeroe has to be abandoned, subsumed into their lots, and then they actually have, part of that agreement that you had signed before the abandonment, allows them to swap their land, so that they all have the proper amount of frontage.
We're not party to the swap, then, they work that out themselves.
Themselves.
But it was clearly spelled out in that first agreement.
So Nora, in the proposed action, it says to refer the proposed discontinuance to the planning board.
Yes, that's standard practice.
You have to, by statute.
Okay.
They don't have to do anything, they could just sit there for 45 days and report.
Interesting question, so we abandon the road, they get the land, right?
Yes.
They didn't pay taxes on the land going forward, because it's no longer a road? The additional land they're getting?
Yes.
Yes, there'll be, there'll be a reapportionment of their lots. In addition to your abandoning the land, after that happens, they go back to the planning board to get the subdivision revised--
Right, yeah.
--so that it shows the correct lot lines.
Okay, okay. So what do we have to do tonight? Just make a motion to send it to the planning board for review?
Respond to the article, send it to the planning board for review.
So I move that the board refer the proposed discontinuance to the planning board for a report under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 811.
Second, out of necessity?
Section 81i.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Correction.
Okay, so let me make sure that--
Looks like 81L, but okay.
Look, under, I know, under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81i.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye. And then, is the next one, to direct special town council to prepare a notice of discontinuance for execution by the board, and for recording the registry of deeds, the event the town votes to discontinue the surplus layout.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye. And then, remove the article road--
This one you can, you can come back.
You can get Nancy back for that, yeah, we can get Nancy back for that.
Thank you.
My word, yours, then?
Thanks.
Take your gun.
Thanks, Gareth, for coming.
So Mike, we're, we're removing the article on Chapter 90?
We did it.
Didn't do it yet.
Do you know the date?
March 20th.
Oh, St. Patrick's Day weekend, huh?
No, St. Patrick's is Sunday. So Mike, do you need us to do official, you remove?
Yes. Under the state law--
May, new--
--that was recently adopted, which made it easier for cities and towns to do business, they removed the requirement that we go through an article accepting Chapter 90 funds annually, as we do. And so we, we can remove this article for further consideration, it's, generally speaking, the board's authority to accept Chapter 90 funds, and to vote to appropriate those funds as they see fit, and following the direction of the Director of Public Works, so.
So that means at some point Todd comes in and says, we need your approval to accept these funds, and it just comes to a meeting?
Yeah. You already do that part of it every, every spring, when we know what the Chapter make, when we know what the Chapter 90 funds are, it's, it's simply eliminating the need to go to town meeting beforehand and spend a minute on this article.
Yeah.
Okay. So I move that we remove the article titled Road Improvement, Chapter 90 Funds, and authorize the town administrator to send a memorandum to the Finance and Warrant Commission informing of this decision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so the only thing I'll point out is that we've got a draft of the language of most of the articles, that will be taken up at the public hearing, the Finance Commission, next week.
Can I ask Nora a question while she's here?
Sure.
It's planning board articles, but I just want to understand it, because I think when they were previewed, we had been in our meeting and came in late. The article about the three garages and commercial vehicle, is that designed to say we don't want having somebody have a used car business working out of buildings attached to the house, or--
So that may have been the original intent, when, intent when the zoning bylaw was written that way, many, many years ago. But the effect of the bylaw right now is that any home that has more than three cars parked in the garage, in the driveway, anywhere on the property--
Is in violation of our zoning.
Is in violation if they don't have a special permit. Now, I think it's clear that most houses in town have three or more cars, the vast majority do.
Many do, yeah.
And it's not a problem, but it's, it's an, an area that then becomes selectively enforced. It's only upon a call of a complaint that the building commissioner has to enforce the zoning bylaw. He doesn't go around town counting the cars in everyone's driveway.
Are we raising the number?
Well, yeah, what does this article do?
Are we giving the number?
So the, the article would, instead of requiring a special permit to have more than three cars on your property, would only require a special permit to have greater than a three-car garage. Now, there's another section in the bylaw that says if you have more than five cars parked on your property, you have to properly screen those cars. That's a separate issue. So that, I think that addresses areas where there are just too many cars, they're all over the place, and they're overburdening the lot. That can still be contained under the section of the bylaw that requires screening for more than five cars on a residential property. But what this does is it says, you really only have to get the special permit if you're trying to put in that fourth car garage, which has a permanent impact on your neighbors, as opposed to just parking that fourth car in your driveway.
And pre-existing properties with more than three garage bays are grandfathered?
So, uh, no, so if you have, we believe we've stayed on top of it with buildings. So if there's a, a property that has a fourth garage, we believe they have a special permit. If they obtained a building permit to build that fourth garage, they went to the zoning board, they would not be able to get their building permit unless they went to the zoning board and got the special permit. So we're all set, there are no pre-existing buildings that exceed three cars that don't have a special permit. But there are plenty of driveways in town where there are more than three cars parked.
Okay, then I'm confused.
And that's what we're trying to get--
That could be mine.
I'm still confused, then.
Okay.
If it's written, I'm, I'm just sorry, I'm being dense about this--
That's all right.
--and I don't mean to be, but it's not making sense. If it's written, is what's being proposed to town meeting, and this may be where I'm missing, what I thought I read with the article is a change to address three-car garages and one commercial vehicle. Tell me, again, what we have versus what's proposed.
Yes, what we have now says that it is, as an accessory, parking as an accessory use is the section in the bylaw that it falls under.
Yeah.
You are not permitted to park or store more than three vehicles, or more than one commercial vehicle up to a certain size, on any residential lot without a special permit.
Okay.
The proposal is to change that, to say you are not permitted to create a, a structure for the storage of more than three vehicles without a special permit.
So if somebody has five cars in their driveway at all times, that doesn't change, it's still a problem? If somebody wants to call and say, my neighbor's got five cars in their driveway--
And they're not screened, yes.
And they're not screened.
That's under a separate bylaw section, however--
We're not trying to figure out how to make that reflect the 21st century circumstances of people having--
We're not, but what we are trying to do is to take away the illegality of having four cars in your driveway, where you can fit the four cars in your driveway. That's, that's the area that--
Then I'm again confused, because you just said something that--
If you have five or more cars, there's another section in the bylaw, one that we're not proposing to change, that requires you to screen the parking area from view. That's a separate section of the bylaw. So that covers us if you have more than five cars, five or more cars. The, the area that we're trying to work on is if you have more than three cars, but less than five. So if you have four cars in your driveway, right now, under the current zoning bylaw, if you don't have a special permit to have that fourth car in your driveway, you're in violation.
Does that include garages?
Right now.
In your garage, in your driveway, if you had a two-car garage--
Right now, okay.
--right now, and you had two other cars in your driveway, you're in violation if you don't have a special permit.
Okay, after town meeting, if approved.
After town meeting, if this was approved, you would only need that special permit if you wanted to add a third, I'm sorry, a fourth garage bay to your property. You would not be required to get a special permit just to park another car on your property.
So you could legally have four cars.
That's threatening a needle.
It is, and the idea is that--
Right.
--we're trying to, we're trying to have our bylaw catch up with the way people currently live. People have more than three cars.
So it's for the four-car--
It's for that fourth car.
Household, this is really where it's focused.
It is.
Because at five, we're covered elsewhere--
Yes.
--with screening requirement.
Yes.
At three, you're okay.
At three, you're okay, it's not a problem. But if you have four, it's a problem now.
Four, in garage, two-car garage, three-car garage, plus one--
Plus a car in the driveway.
However you have it, you have four, you're in violation right now.
That's right. And that's not, it's not feasible for us to enforce that bylaw.
Glad I asked, okay.
Good? You sure?
Thank you. I, I just, you know, I read it, and I said, I'm just not really sure what this is--
We'll have to come up with some clear graphics, so that it's more easily understood when they go back before the spin time.
We'll give an example, give some examples--
Yes.
You can give a picture of one of Mrs. Hyde's neighbors.
Sometimes even Mrs. Hyde.
I think--
When the children were all at home--
No, no kidding, I mean, when mine's not at college, and they're home, there's four cars in the driveway.
I think most residents would be very surprised to know that they are in violation.
Oh, sure, sure.
Nora, can I, Cincinnati brought up, so why, why they jump from a--
Blame it on me.
--six-foot fence to a seven-foot fence? What's the difference with that? I was like--
A foot.
Obviously, thank you.
My understanding is there was a change in the building code--
Yeah.
--that allowed a structure to be defined as a seven-foot fence, as opposed to a six-foot fence, and so this is trying to be more consistent with that. It's just to give a little bit of leeway, it's something that, a lot of, a lot of times when someone puts up a six-foot fence, they actually leave a space under it for--
Yeah.
The Conservation Commission calls it the critter crawl, so that they can get under the fence.
Yeah.
But that puts the fence above six feet, and so it's technically a violation.
You know what?
By changing it to seven feet, then it's not a violation--
You know what, wood fences to touch wet ground anyway, if it's wood.
The thing that scared me about it was, you know, we have this, some, some corners that people like to put up fences, and--
Yes.
By giving them seven as opposed to six--
Right, so that was something that was brought up at one of the hearings, and the planning board is looking to see specifically how that, right now, we have a corner clearance--
Correct.
--that's measured as a distance from the center of the intersection, and so that will be looked at to see--
That was last year or the year before? Because it just went in.
I believe it was maybe--
Maybe last year.
Fall of 17, or no, it must've been spring of 18.
Yeah, spring of 18. Okay. Yeah, that was, that was the only thing that scared me about it, because knowing that we've had this discussion with a couple of neighbors on my side.
Right, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Essentially, the fences are required to be much further back into the lot now than they were before, if they're above three feet, so--
Okay.
--whether it's six feet or seven feet, I think it would have the same effect.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along, we have the transfer of funds for the Westwood Media Center, from both Verizon and Comcast. So I don't think there's much discussion about this?
No.
No? John?
You want me to do it, John?
Yeah, will you?
Okay. I move that the Select Board approve the transfer of $20,317.09, $3,250.62 from Comcast, and $45,923.86, and $17,427.60 from Verizon, totaling $86,919.17 to go to Westwood Media Center per the license agreements and the Westwood Media Center agreements signed by the Select Board.
I'm second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have the release of executive session minutes.
Is there a way we can do this in summary?
All the ones that are on the page.
Sure we can, yeah, I don't see why not.
Can we do it as one motion, and we don't have to go through--
Yes.
--each one in, in open session?
We'll be posting the decision, the decision goes online anyway, so--
Well, I want to make sure we're in compliance, I don't want to do anything we can't.
Okay, so I move that the board release the, the executive session minutes dated February 22nd, 2016, issue two.
We're gonna do one at a time?
Come all together, okay.
Okay, so I move that we release the following: February 22nd, 2016, issue two, March 14th, 2016, issue one, August 22nd, 2016, issue two, October 3rd, 2016, issue one, November 28th, 2016, issue one, April 11th, 2017, issue two, September 11th, 2017, issue four, October 16th, 2017, issue two, December 18th, 2017, issue two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so do it again. Get me out again.
You can just use this.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of it, right? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
The Select Board will be going into executive session to discuss one issue of actual litigation related to Topgolf in Canton, per Master General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, of which would have a detrimental effect on the governing body if discussions were held in open session. The board will be returning to open session following executive session. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 4th, in the small meeting room at the Westwood Public Library. Approximately 6:00 or 6:30, has not been determined yet. The meeting is prior to the Finance and Warrant Commission's first public hearing, which that meeting for the Finance and Warrant Commission is scheduled to begin at 7:00 in the community room at the library. A motion to go into executive session?
I move that the board go into executive session for the aforementioned reason.
Second.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh, aye. Going into executive session, we will be returning.
We will be.
We will be.
We will be.
We are back from executive session to discuss one topic. And Mr. Bailey, why don't you take over for us?
Happy to. We want to talk about the board's appeal of a special permit that was issued by the Canton Zoning Board of Appeals to authorize a Topgolf facility at 777 Dedham Street in Canton. This is the former Cumberland Farms facility, and it's in close proximity to, to the Westwood Town Line, and most importantly, in close proximity to the Canton Street-University Avenue intersection, which has been the subject of an awful lot of study, analysis, and work as the University Station project was developed. About a month ago, we filed at the direction of the board a protective appeal of that, of that special permit approval in the land court in Boston.
Just stopping there, just so anybody knows, because we were, the town was not notified, right?
Yes, exactly. The, the reason that we filed that appeal is the town never got noticed. The...
As required.
The zoning statute, the planning boards of all abutting towns are required to be notified of any special permit applications. We reviewed our records and determined that we were, in fact, never notified of that. So we had a basis for procedural appeal, which we filed. Subsequent to that, we have had two meetings with Topgolf developer and representatives, you know, with Mr. Gillette, Mr. Corchen, Ms. Locknain, and with data engineering, our traffic engineers. We have discussed possible mitigation from the Topgolf facility and ultimately agreed, Topgolf agreed to provide the town with $250,000 to be used for design of highway or sidewalk improvements in the Canton Street corridor. That money would be paid when a building permit is issued for the Topgolf facility. Topgolf also has agreed that when they open, in their opening materials on their website, they will have wayfinding information that will direct people not to use Canton Street, but instead to get off 95 at University Avenue. We are going to, you know, the next step here is to execute the necessary legal documents. One thing the board may want to consider is that there is an existing $220,000 that is in escrow under the original development agreement for University Station. That is in escrow for potentially an intersection redesign at Canton Street and University Avenue following completion of the I-95 northbound ramp, which again is, is at least a couple of years away. You know, in talking with staff, you know, there was some consideration that if we had that $220,000 in addition to the $250,000, that's adequate money to fund a design study